Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of June 17th. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that this meeting is being televised. It will be broadcast live on Easton's cable station, and it will be available on rebroadcast. You can see it directly on your television, or you can call it up on the computer. The first item is a public hearing on the transfer of auto dealer class-two license from Edward Johnson, doing business as Quality Automotive Service, 500 Foundry Street, Easton, Mass., to Ryan Philkins and Colby Philkins, doing business as Quality Automotive Services, 500 Foundry Street.
The Eastern Board of Selectmen as licensing authorities will hold a hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass., on Monday, June 17, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. to consider and act upon an application for the transfer of class-two license from the Edward Johnson, doing business as Quality Automotive Services, to Ryan Philkins and Colby Philkins, doing business as Quality Automotive Services, 500 Foundry Street, Easton, Mass., to engage in the principal business of buying or selling second-hand motor vehicles or parts thereof pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, with a plan on file at the Select Board's office.
So if you want to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what's going on?
Yes, my name is Ryan Philkins. My brother, Colby. I've been working under Ed Johnson at Quality Automotive Services for just shy of five years now. It's time for Ed to retire, and my brother and I have been presented with the opportunity to buy the business. So we're moving forward with that, and we're here today to get the license transferred over for the used car sales.
Great. And do you just do used car sales?
We do auto repair, general automotive repair, and the sale of used cars.
Okay, terrific. Do we have some questions?
Yes. Do you say you've worked under Edward for quite some time?
Yes, I've been with him since March of 2015.
Fifteen?
Full-time.
Were you in the same line of work before that?
Yes, I trained at Southeastern Regional High School for four years prior to that, and I also had employment history for one year as a repair tech prior to working with Ed.
And how about your brother?
I started kind of in his footsteps. I went to Southeastern Regional, completed automotive there, and from there, I went to Copeland Chevrolet and worked there for just over a half a year. I had to leave there so I could attend Mass Bay Community College for BMW school. And from there, I went on and worked at BMW for just about a year as a technician. And I left there to take on this opportunity with my brother.
That's excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So the note that I have here says this is subject to a maximum of seven vehicles on display, and the applicant providing proper surety bond as required by state law.
Yes.
Anything else we should know, Mike? All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to transfer the auto dealer class-two license from Edward Johnson, doing business as Quality Automotive Service, 500 Foundry Street, Easton, to Ryan and Colby Philkins, doing business as Quality Automotive Services, 500 Foundry Street, Easton?
So moved. Second?
Craig and Chuck, all in favor? Unanimous. Congratulations and good luck with your new business.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Awesome. All set?
Yes. Thanks.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Sorry, you have one more minute before you could begin that next item, I believe.
These public hearings are timed notices, so we have to start exactly on time. So it's 6:04, and this one's timed for 6:05. Okay.
Eastern Board of Selectmen as licensing authorities will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, June 17, 2019, at 6:05 p.m. to consider and act upon an application for a junk dealer's license, submitted by Gary Stone, doing business as South Shore Gold, 559 Foundry Street, Easton, Mass. to engage in the collection, dealing in, keeping a shop for the purchase, sale, resale, or barter of junk, old and precious metals, and/or second-hand articles pursuant to Town of Easton Bylaws, Section 156-2(c), with a plan on file at the Select Board Office.
Is Mr. Stone here? Come on up and sit down. Introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your business.
Hi, Gary Stone, 561 Foundry Street. Been in Easton for almost 20 years. I've had licenses in a few municipalities in Massachusetts, buying and selling gold, diamonds, precious metals, coins. In conjunction with my primary business, the opportunity came up to have an office right next door, which would allow me the ability to, you know, put one of my skills to work. And, you know, there's nothing that I don't. I've been doing it a long time, so I'm happy to facilitate whatever, you know, the police department or other reporting agencies need me to do. It's fairly straightforward. It's really just metals reclamation, really not trying to resell to the general public, mostly just as a metals reclamation. Mostly dealing with dental, looking more to deal with the dental fields, dentists, orthodontists. We send out mailers to dental offices and organizations, and we try to buy scrap metals. And pursuant to that additionally, just coins, junk metals, jewelry, gems. And pretty much just, we reclaim the metals. We're not really reselling to the public.
Okay, great. There's a couple of notices on here. The dealer must maintain a 21-day holding period on all transactions over $500. Photocopies of picture identification shall be taken for all those who sell any item valued at over $500. A list of all transactions valued at over $500 shall be submitted to the Eastern Police Department within one week of the transaction. Purchases from persons less than 18 years of age are prohibited. The dealer must obtain a business certificate. All outstanding excise tax must be paid. The applicant can acquire precious metals and jewelry but cannot actually operate a junkyard as defined in the Town of Easton zoning bylaws.
Agreed.
So you've got all that information.
Yeah, not a problem at all.
Great, any questions?
Reporting is in real time, and it'll be right direct to the police department.
Okay, excellent. Any questions from the board? Okay.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
If somebody would like to make a motion to approve the application for the junk dealer's license to Gary Stone, doing business as South Shore Gold, 559 Foundry Street?
So moved. Second?
Craig and Tom, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck with your new business.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
What can we do?
If you'd like, you can take care of probably the one-day liquor licenses and perhaps the first item of action and discussion in the next seven minutes.
Okay, one-day liquor licenses. Stone Soup LLC, doing business as Langwater Farm, solstice pizza night, June 21st. Come on up.
Hey, folks.
How are you doing?
Kevin O'Dwyer, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your event.
Kevin O'Dwyer from Langwater Farm. And we'll be hosting another Friday night pizza night, this Friday, the 21st. It also is the summer solstice, so an extra special event day for us. We have a new addition to the lineup this pizza night. Our friend Simka from Bushel &amp; Crumb Pie, who we resale her pies at the farm stand. She'll be slicing out strawberry pie, made with our strawberries. And so we'll have those in addition to the pizza. So there'll be dessert and beer, hopefully upon approval here. Pizzas will include cheese, classic pepperoni. And this month, we're going to have garlic scape and squash blossom. So the garlic scape is a top shoot that the garlic plant sends up this time of year in June before it starts to bulb. It's edible, it's delicious, tastes just like garlic, maybe a little milder. So we'll be searing that in the oven and then putting that on pizza with the blossoms, and it makes a really nice pie.
Sounds really good.
I should point out, we have a rain date for the following Saturday, for the 22nd. I think, is that included on there?
Yes, it is.
It says the first night's the 21st, so it's the day after on the 22nd?
Correct, yep. It'll be the Saturday.
Okay. And then you're doing that again on July 19th with the rain date on July 20th?
Correct, yep. We'll have to announce that menu later on social media.
All right, terrific. And so people can just come and pay for their purchase when they're there? There's no tickets or sign-ups or anything like that?
Exactly, yep. No tickets, no sign-up. The event starts at 5, runs until 8. We shouldn't need lights. It's the solstice, so it should be a good night.
All right. Any other questions from the board? All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for June 21st with the rain date of June 22nd?
So moved.
Chuck and Craig, all in favor? Unanimous. And a repeat on that motion with the dates of July 19th and July 20th as the rain date?
So moved. Second?
Chuck and Craig, all in favor? Unanimous again. Thank you, and good luck with your event.
That's great, thanks so much, folks.
Thank you. Good luck.
We have the Eastern Shovel Town Cultural District Legacy Adult Juried Art Exhibit at Oaks Ames Memorial Hall, 3 Barrows Street. Applicant Carolyn Cole of the Eastern Shovel Town Cultural District applied for a one-day beer and wine liquor license for a legacy adult juried art exhibit to be held on June 21st at Oaks Ames Hall from 6:30 to 9:00. And it doesn't seem that Carolyn is here. So this is something that the Eastern Shovel Town Cultural District has sponsored for many years now, and it's a really, really great opportunity to see some of our local artists and speak with them and get to look at their work. So I've been to a few times, and it's really, really great. There's no cost to this, so just show up and take a look. If anybody would like to make a motion to approve their one-day liquor license?
So moved. Second?
That's Tom and Craig, all in favor? Unanimous. And next is the Southeastern Regional Services Group Contract Awards for DPW Supplies. Michael?
Sure. So actually, there, in your packet, is a brief note. This is the annual award of DPW supplies that are procured as part of a purchasing consortium that the Town of Easton is member of with many other municipalities in the area, the Southeastern Regional Services Group. There was a clerical error on the award sheet the last time it was voted, so this is just correcting that and revoting these supplies, the annual supplies for DPW.
So anybody have any questions? Would somebody like to make a motion to award the contract for DPW supplies to?
So moved.
Do we have to name them individually?
No, because it's an aggregate. You would just award the Southeastern Regional Services Group DPW supplies for fiscal 2020.
Okay.
So moved. Second?
Chuck and Tom, all in favor? Unanimous. And next is the contract extension for Weston and Sampson Services.
Sure. So attached in your packet is a memo from DPW Director Dave Field for the O&M of the Northeastern Village Waste Water Treatment Plant. This is a request for a one-year extension, which would complete the third year of eligible contracting for this operation and maintenance agreement with Weston and Sampson for that wastewater treatment plant. When the request for proposals was initially issued a couple of years back, it was for a one-year contract with the option to extend for a second and third year. No terms to the contract are to be changed by this extension. The only escalation in cost is the one that's agreed to in the original contract, which is the CPI-U index for Boston, which is roughly 2.3%. So Dave Field recommends approval, so do I.
Any questions? Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the contract extension for Weston and Sampson Services?
So moved. Second?
Craig and Tom, all in favor? We'll squeeze one more in? No? That one? So next up is the Annual Board and Committee Volunteer Appointments. We're going to go through the contested volunteer appointments first, and then later on in the evening, we'll do the uncontested. So just so that people know, we don't take public comment for this. We're going to have the candidates come up. We'll call you up. We'll interview you, ask you some questions, and then we'll vote at the end on that. So the first one is Agricultural Commission. We have, bear with me, because there's a lot of pieces of that.
This is the one where Rosa Galliano?
No, that has changed, actually.
Did it change from the recent message you sent out?
Yes.
Got it.
So the Agricultural Commission, I got a call from the chair just as I was on my way in tonight, that one of the candidates, there's only one seat open. We got two applications. One was from Rosa Gallino, who has a new business at the Field House with food service, and from Rory O'Dwyer. Is Rory here by any chance? Okay. So Rosa has decided that she's not going to be able to fulfill the time requirement of this, and so she's withdrawn. And Rory will be the only candidate available for this. So that was hot off the presses. Earlier in the day, we got information that was a little bit backwards from that. So if there's a mistake on this, I'm blaming the chair. So if somebody would like to make a motion to nominate, I mean, to accept Rory O'Dwyer, and this is a roll-call vote?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Tom and Craig?
Liam O'Dwyer?
Broussard O'Dwyer?
Barger O'Dwyer?
Folgenetti O'Dwyer?
King O'Dwyer?
All right. Thank you to Rosa for her time on that board, and thanks to Ms. O'Dwyer for stepping up on that. The next one is the Conservation Commission. The first one up is Dan Farron. Come on up, Dan. Want to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, my name is Dan Farron. I'm a lifelong resident of Easton, certainly a proud native son. I spent the last three years on the Conservation Commission. Got involved initially with the Board of Economic Development. Then a friend and I tried to do a small development town, and we certainly are not developers, but had an experience that was very disheartening for us with the Conservation Commission, which unfortunately kind of became the impetus for me to run for the Conservation Commission three years ago. You know, didn't know a lot back then, and ACEC and an ILSF, and so there was a lot learned in three years. But I think what's most important is the Town of Easton faces kind of a crossroads with respect to the Conservation Commission, economic development, smart development, particularly at a time when we're cutting things like music at our schools and have a budget that's very challenged. On the other end of that, we have the Bluestein Report that said that one of the biggest drawbacks to Easton, other than being a spectacular place to live, if you were going to invest and develop here, it was seen as very costly and timely and non-cooperative. I think our Conservation Commission has done a tremendous job in that. I think that that's going to be the crux of the issue going forward. I'm three years into working with the folks at Stonehill to hopefully develop a hotel, which could be a significant, if not one of the most significant tax drivers in the town with very little services. But, you know, one of the major concerns you hear from the partners that they talk to is, wow, we hear Easton's a really tough place. And I say, well, no, things have gotten a lot better, much more cooperative, much more win-win. And I think in that respect, we've come a long way. You know, the bucolic days of Easton are past, but we still are really gifted. We have more open space than any towns within 25 miles of Boston, with the exception of two, that being Canton and Concord. So we've done exceptionally well. We do have very protective standards, which often put us in a position where we have to make a decision between protecting what might be a vernal pool and, you know, perhaps a parent with special needs being able to put in a pool in a recreation area for that child. So it's challenging. And I think the board right now is at that point where, if we continue to move in that direction, to be cooperative, to work towards smart development while still following our charge very faithfully, but also being, trying to get to a win-win, trying to treat every citizen and applicant who comes in front of us with respect. I think those are the most important things. And if you'll indulge me, having sat on that board for three years, Mr. Goodman has sat beside me, and I couldn't endorse somebody any higher. He is truly the citizens' advocate. He's the hardest-working guy on the commission by far. He goes to every site. He treats everybody who comes in front of him with respect. And I think the teamwork that the five of us have been able to put together, that type of continuity at a crucial point like this is of great importance. We don't want Easton to change dramatically, but we are facing things that are very challenging, and we need to get smart growth. And having a Conservation Commission who is seen as somebody who will work with you and be fair with you while still following your charge is important. Not with a bias or a default mechanism to say no, because we have very powerful instruments. We can say anything's a vernal pool and say no to anybody. And let's face it, if somebody has land that's been sitting there for 10 years and it's a butt you, you don't want anything built there. Yet that's a person's land, and you have to respect it. So we're constantly put in a very challenging position to try to make the right decision, but always be fair and respectful to everybody who comes in front of us. I had a very different experience in still dragging through something that we thought we'd have Coach Nixon and my mom in a place, and a project that's dragged on for five years. But things are better. I hope to be reappointed. I hope to continue to make them better. I think Mr. Goodman's a very important part of that. Mr. Humphrey, Mr. Cuttino, everybody on the board, we're working well together. I do think that the first year, there's a major, major learning curve that you have to come up to. And I do think right now continuity is of the utmost importance. So I think that's about it.
Any questions from the board?
I have one, Mr. Farron. You talked about economic development, and I'm curious about how you balance the need for economic development in this town while still protecting our wetlands and our water supply and our environment?
Yeah. I think some things are very, very clear-cut. You know, if you have things within, you know, well within a boundary to get a waiver, our default should be no. Absolutely should be no. The vernal pool issue for Easton is a little more complicated. We have a 100-foot boundary, and then another 100-foot buffer. Initially, 100 foot, if you square it, you get 10,000 square feet, which is a quarter of an acre. But if you push it out to 200, you get a full acre. So that's very challenging. We try to use common sense. We had some folks come in front of us, and we tried to get to the point where what was thought to be a vernal pool, we weren't sure. We weren't going to be able to get confirmation of it being a vernal pool. If we were, we weren't going to know where the boundary was and where, you know, we should start counting. The people came back. I think they were very frustrated and disheartened. And we got it to 125 feet. And that was probably conservative. It was probably closer to 140, 150. But to say no to a mom who's trying to put in a pool to manage the needs of a special-needs child for something that might be a vernal pool, and the edge where it was, really, we don't know. And it wasn't confirmed as a vernal pool. It was challenging. So every case, we have to take, and we can't go in biased. We have to go in, and we have to work with everybody who comes in front of us, show them respect, and try to get to a win-win solution that works. Sometimes that's extracting public good. And if we can do that, we try to do that. But we don't try to do that on straightforward things that aren't waivers. We also try to be respectful of people's time and money. You know, if you bring in a lawyer and a land agent or wetland agent, every time you bring them in, every meeting, you know, if it gets posted too late, that's $1,000. I don't know about you guys, but $1,000 is a lot of money. And, you know, I think we've gone a long way in terms of being seen as still protecting. You know, we have 6,300 acres and counting of open space and conservation land, and that's tremendous. And it will continue with almost every project. At this juncture, I think we have to balance every case that comes in front of us and try to be respectful, try to get to win-win, and try to do what's fair for the landowner as well as for the town as well as for the town, and for protecting, you know, our wetland standards, our wildlife standards.
I have one other question, if that's okay.
Sure.
Talking about our bylaws and our regulations, do you think that there should be some modification or changes in those regulations and bylaws as they relate to environment and wetlands, et cetera?
I think that they were, they were written and rewritten and had a number of iterations, and they became conflicted in a lot of points, and were way longer than they needed to be. The vernal pool boundary is something I think we have to look at. I don't know what the right answer is. I don't know if 200, if the 200, 100 plus 100 is the right thing. I don't know if it's slightly less than that. I do know that we can be more responsive, that the bylaws can be cleaner, more common sense, because even lawyers will come back and say, "They're very Byzantine." And I think we're in the process of doing that collaboratively, and I think we made some headway. We ran into some bumps, and I think we, at one point, said, "You know what? We don't have the right answers. We don't have the right information. It's important for us to sit back, get all that information, and to do this with discretion and intelligence and a full hearing of it."
Thank you.
I have a question or two. Mr. Farron, some while back, you had suggested, as I was reading a couple of the sets of minutes, you had been suggesting that commission members, on a rotating basis, should call the applicants weekly to discuss the issues and concerns individually with them?
I don't recall that specifically.
Okay, it was brought up at a couple of, this was specifically at...
I think the point...
A while back, like December of '17?
I think the point, if I recall it correctly, would be, a lot of times, what we would have is applicants who are getting responses the day of a meeting. So, effectively, they had been going through a process, and if they were going to appear in front of us at 6:30 at night, they would get their written response released at 11:30, 1 o'clock that afternoon, which basically meant that that meeting was lost for them. So, being able to reach out to them so that they're not just, you know, burning thousands of dollars at every chance, that we're being kind of conscientious about the expenses that they have to take in hand is important. And if that took outreach, I thought that was a smart way to do it.
Okay, if you were to be reappointed today for another three years, Ms. Folgiannetti had mentioned that one of the incumbents on another, the agricultural commission, was unable, stated that she was unable to fulfill the time requirements. Are you able to fulfill the time requirements of this position?
I've missed very few meetings. I have challenges like a lot of you folks. I have an 80-year-old mother who thinks that Easton is heaven, so spending time here with her is important. I have a 13-year-old daughter, and I'm a single dad. I have two demanding Irish bosses and a travel schedule. But, by and large, I make it to almost every meeting, with the exception, when I don't, I go back through everything and try to be as diligent as I can and get to every site as I can and make sure I'm going through the material. You know, like I said earlier, you know, the experience, three years on, you know, stuff that took me a lot longer back then, I get. Being able to talk to Andrea freely helps me, you know, really digging into things. So, I feel very comfortable with that. You know, it's effectively two Monday nights, and, you know, Monday nights work for me mostly, because, you know, most of my travel is not Monday night. So, I've only missed a couple of meetings. And getting here for the meetings shouldn't be all that challenging. Also gets me to see my mom more often.
Yeah. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Farron. Given wetlands and the importance towards our drinking supply, can you speak to how you believe wetlands should be taken care of so our water supply is protected, and also how you've taken these last three years and improved, either via state training or classes, to continue to understand the evolution of the importance of wetlands?
So, we're offered a bunch of different training. We're allowed to go to a number of them. I went to, I've attended one, was able to attend one. I think it's a very complex matter. You know, we've gotten conflicting input about the watershed here and the drinking water here. There seems to be a consensus that our drinking water is fairly unchallenged, but, you know, we have to be diligent about that, and that is of utmost importance. The last thing, you know, one of the first things I, when I moved here in 1973, drinking tap water was amazing. It was better than anything. I still think it is. And that's a resource that we've got to protect. And how we do that, you know, we do it in case by case, but I don't know if we've taken a real aggressive mandate as a conservation commission to truly address that issue specifically. You know, if we feel as though it's jeopardized, and we were to have the wherewithal to address that, I would wholeheartedly be behind doing whatever we needed to do to safeguard that.
Thank you.
Mark? You've served three years, so was there anything that you'd like to implement moving forward, or anything you've learned over the past three years where now you have experience and you feel as though you can do better or change it in any way?
Yeah. I think some, all of us as human beings come to things with a natural default or a bias or something, and I've definitely, you know, tried to put those things aside and try to come to look at everything with as unbiased of an ear as I can. I think cleaning up the bylaws, clearly, all of us agree. I think consensus, the five of us feel that they can be, you know, there are times, there were things that were on the website, they were in the bylaws, that were conflicting over maintenance issues, what you could and couldn't do where our reach was. There's issues with enforcement. You know, we've got some folks who just are pretty non-compliant, and that's a very difficult measure for us as a group to do. We don't want to be heavy-handed, but I'd say, if you, to answer those two specific questions, I'd say, you know, I've learned a tremendous amount, much more efficient now. But I would say the bylaws, if the drinking water becomes an issue, I think we should clearly jump on that, and if a special committee was necessary, we should do that. And, you know, ultimately, I think, you know, we might be a little bit better about getting things to be able to save applicants, you know, normal mom and pops, saving them money in terms of just being able, so that they know beforehand, so that a meeting isn't a dead meeting that just gets continued, and they have two experts show up, and it costs them a lot of money. So, I think that's it. You know, it's been an interesting and challenging, but you learn a lot. That first year is, it's like learning a different language and trying to figure out where all the pieces fit in.
So, my last question is about municipal vulnerability for climate change. What do you feel the conservation commission's role is in that?
Climate change is here. Climate change is real. It has to be addressed. The more and more I study about it, the sadder and sadder I get that it feels as though the things we're going to do may not move the needle as much as some other things. But, having said that, I think it's important that we continue to maintain the integrity of our wetlands, our wildlife, our drinking water, and balance that against being fair with individual applicants who come in front of us. You know, we're an appointed board. We're not an elected board. But, boy oh boy, did I see that we can have a huge impact on the quality of somebody's life with one decision. And, you know, that's a big responsibility, so...
Have you been able to get to any of the conferences that the state does host?
Yeah, there's another one coming up that I'm hoping to get to in the fall, and I've friends, I have a friend who's on the Concord Conservation Commission, and we're trying to coordinate that. She's far more knowledgeable than I am, and I'm looking forward to that conference.
All right, great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farron.
So, next up is Michael Goodman. Come on up. Introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your interest on the committee.
All right. Madam Chair and worthy board, my name is Michael Goodman. I live at 159 Bay Road. I was born and raised here. I've lived here my whole life. I went to Southeastern Regional and graduated from there. My dad and I started a company that most of you know, P&amp;L Paintball, 26 years ago, right here in town, over on Rockland Street, and we were right up against conservation land and wetlands. And since then, we've moved various times, various locations, Brockton, Avon, Holbrook, Taunton, Rehoboth, to our current location in Bridgewater, where we've been 16 years. Each of those places has been property with wetland implications that we've had to work in. And I've been working in or around wetland resource areas with all phases of construction and all manner of tools, both mechanical and hand, always respecting the resource areas, forests, animal habitats. We work closely with the departments in each town we've been in. We've never had an issue, you know, not once, very, very cooperative relationships. So, that's kind of the experience that I have, that I bring to the board. I want to thank you for the opportunity that I, you know, for serving the last term that I had and serving my fellow taxpayers, because that's what I see. And with all due respect, I don't serve you, I'm serving them and their needs. And I thank you for allowing this opportunity to come before you tonight and ask to continue to serve. I also like to thank all those here for all the other boards and committees, and for this commission, because, you know what? Like Dan said, I had an inkling of an idea of what, you know, what it might be about, or I thought I did, after watching my father for many years serve on all kinds of things. It's a full-time job. It's a lot more work than most people think, so...
You just made it look easy.
Yes, exactly. So, you know, that's where I, you know, again, three years ago, I was appointed, you know, it was a little bit of a cloud of controversy. I've endeavored each day from that time to serve as honorably and fairly as possible, always treating each applicant with respect and dignity, treating them the way that I would want to be treated, and the way that I was treated, again, in those other towns that I spoke of, that I did, where our roles reversed. In my three years here, I have a few accomplishments. I have attended a couple of MAC conferences, and I attended the MVP, which I found very informative, working with the other boarding committee members, citizens, the fire department...
Just explain what MVP means for the people at home that...
The vulnerable, the mass vulnerability plan, and what that is. That speaks to what we're going to do in advance of, regardless of what position you believe, climate change, weather events are getting more severe, period. And what can we do in advance? What I liked about this is a big knock that I've always had on government. What can we do in advance of that to prepare better? You know, massive amounts of rain in a short amount of time overwhelm our culverts, as an example. So, working with Greg Swan, our assistant director at the DPW, we can address the needs of the culvert, and where we fit in is, most of those culverts are located in wetlands. So, how can we make a repair now that's going to allow better drainage and manage those types of extreme weather events, among other things? So, that was good. I also accompanied one of our applicants to the DEP through his superseding order of conditions. After the commission had, we had made a ruling in the gentleman's favor, DEP overruled us. He appealed through his agent, his local attorney and engineer, and I followed that process, going to the DEP Lakeville, because I, you know, just wanted to see the process from one end to the other, and wanted the applicant, you know, to have that comfort level, because we had made that decision, we stood by the decision, and as such, the final outcome of that was, he did prevail, and he will be opening, reopening his father's cranberry bog. His father was a veteran, so that was his father's dying wish. So, that was very, it was very important to me. You know, that's that right there, that particular case, that's the best part about serving on a board or a committee, is applicants let us into their space, into their homes. This is where they entertain their friends and their family. This is where they raise their family and their children. You know, that's special. That's sacred, and I take that privilege very seriously, because it is a privilege to be allowed into somebody's home, somebody's backyard. That's where they feel comfortable. You know, every applicant has hopes and dreams, whether it's a downtown restaurant empire, Quayside Commons, maybe it's an above-ground pool. Maybe they want to fix the porch, or they just want some more grass to cut. They're all equal important to me and the board, and they should be equally important to everybody. You know, I see this position of one of balance and compromise, balancing the protections of our wetland resources, along with respecting the hopes and dreams of our citizenry. To me, that's smart growth. It's my sincere hope that you will see fit to keep this board together, as Commissioner Farron spoke to, to continue on its course of regulation review. You are not going to find five people who couldn't be more diametrically opposed. We don't agree on anything. But I think what's most important about that is, what is healthier? That, a board that fights every meeting and discusses everything, and the meetings are long, and we hear all sides and all information, or the board that goes five up, five down? You know, to me, our diametric differences are much better, and that's what makes us a healthy and productive board. And again, in closing, I thank you for your time and your due diligence.
We'll probably go around with the exact same questions that we asked the first time, so Craig, you're up.
I'll start. Mr. Goodman, talking about economic development, how do you propose that we balance economic development in Easton, at the same time protecting our wetlands and our water supply and our air quality, et cetera?
I think if we rewrite our regulations in such a way, not taking any of the strength out of them, or fact of the matter, not changing them at all, but merely rewording them, so again, so that mom and pop don't need to, you know, hire a lawyer at 125 an hour, that would be a big help. And we're working on, we have, now we have the, we've had before my time on the board, we have the simplified septic review, which saves time and money for applicants, and again, still protecting the resources. So, we're hoping to do that process, that simplified review, which would just go through the agent, with more what we call de minimis projects, which would be, you know, perhaps replacing the existing porch. So, the footings aren't going to be, aren't going to be disturbed, there's not going to be any prior disturbance. You're going to hire your carpenter, and he's going to come in and replace it. And for that, you know, my thought process is, why should they charge, again, you know, the lawyer, the engineer, the project coordinator, you know, the surveyor, and have 375 an hour come down here for the night? You know, essentially for what? It's already disturbed the porches, and many projects like that. So, it could be porch, large shed, garage extension, so forth, so...
Thank you. So, sort of picking up on that, about our bylaws and our regulations around CONCON, do you see that they need to be modified and changed? In what way do you see that that happens?
Absolutely. Not to be duplicitous, but as Dan Farron spoke early, I think we need to take a hard look at that vernal buffer. And again, I don't know the answer, but I want to know more. I mean, we need more information. But some of the other regulations, like the one we worked on, the Rare Species Act, what we did was essentially took something that didn't exist. If you had that habitat on your property, you weren't able to even come in and ask for a waiver. Now, you can. So, we haven't abdicated any of our responsibility. We've just given an applicant a chance to come in and talk and ask. We've given the ability to have and ask where they didn't before. You know, and the other thing that I'd like to change is the length, and a lot of it is duplicitous. By duplicitous, I mean, we have the same local bylaw as we do for the state. So, it's, again, you're reading, you're reading somebody to interpret it twice for you, and it doesn't provide any extra level of protection to the resource area.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple. Mr. Goodman, you referred to a number of items that, it just so happened, I brought a copy of the discussion from the minutes of the, back in December 18 of 2017. The discussion was the regulation revision for possible revision to the rare species waiver.
Yes.
And a couple of things that you stated in that concerned me. It's been modified a little bit by what you're telling me, but it said, you said at one point that the commission, the conservation commission, should rely on the state to provide the review. Applicants should not have to go to another layer and have a local review. Can you explain that, please?
Sure. So, at the, when that, when that occurs, so, you know, you want to put a road in, whatever the situation, maybe you want to put a house behind your house, and you've got to put that road, and you determine your professional engineer, your professional person that you've hired tells you that, hey, or a town agent tells you that you're in a rare and endangered species area, a national heritage trust issue, you have to file through the state and do a study through them in various levels of documentation and bureaucracy. So, you have to do a report, which, if I'm not mistaken, is somewhere in the $10,000 to $15,000 range. That gets submitted to them, they review it, and then they provide those results to both us and their professionals. So, to then turn around and have another layer here, to me, again, just seemed to be repetitive, and obviously, the people at the state level have far more experience, you know, telling us whether it will be harmful or not.
Does the layer here customarily come before or after the state layer?
Haven't had a case, so I can't say, but I believe it comes, the state comes first. So, if you were to put in, so if you were to put something in, you would go to the state first.
Okay. I'm not sure that I personally, I'm wondering, I know that the state is overloaded with work, and I put more trust in the local level than at the state level personally. But, thanks for that response. And one other part of this is that the wording in the minute may have been a little harsh, but it says that Mr. Goodman claimed that he wanted to chop down regulation. There are too many of them.
Again, speaking to what I said earlier, there's two sets of regulations that say the same thing. For example, the state, the River Act, the 200-foot buffer from the river, we have it both in the town bylaw and also in the state.
Okay.
So, you're just, it exists in both places, and again, you're paying your professional to read it in two places, not one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mine was asked, actually. It was about making sure we protected the wetlands and the water, and I think Mr. Barger asked you, and you answered it earlier. So, it was my key question.
I'll ask the same question. So, you've served for three years. Is there anything you would like to do moving forward, if you got this for the next three years, that you've learned that you would now like to implement or do a little bit different, or what experience do you carry forward?
I'd like to continue helping, as I alluded with the one little, the one little side note, but I'd like to continue that regulation reform to make it easier for citizens, not lessening in any way, shape, or form, but taking the legal speak out of it, per se, no offense to any lawyers present, and just make it easier for the mom and pop applicant so that they don't have to, you know, hire the engineer. For example, we have cases, it happens all the time, both here in Easton and in many towns, that somebody's new, they move in, they get talking to the neighbor, and they decide, hey, I'm going to, I've got a one-year-old and a three-year-old, I'm going to put a swing set in the backyard. So, they cut a couple of trees down, somebody calls, we get involved. And sometimes, we ask for a, you know, for a botanist or a wetland scientist, and those things are very expensive. Those folks don't work cheaply. So, if we could make, if we could streamline that, make it a little easier and a little more obvious and less complicated, that's what I really like to do.
Are you on any other boards?
I am not. I am the, I have been the representative since I was appointed to the conservation commission. I've been the representative for the CPA committee, as well as the Shovel Shop Water Study Group, which we haven't done anything in quite a while, but I still found the work interesting, and it was... in quite a while, but I still found the work interesting, and it was, all of it was just a tremendous learning experience. You know, as Dan spoke, the, the curve is hard. That first year is very, very tough. But you catch up quick, and, and I think I can serve even better now, because a lot of things are, are simplified, and you can look at them much, much quicker and figure out what you need to spend your time and do your, your hard research on, and what you can just look at quick and, and, you know, get done.
One more question, Mr. Goodman, from me. Um, can you just give us a sense of what, what percentage of the cases that you see coming before you are mom and pop versus developers, if you will?
Probably two-thirds. If I had to, if I, without looking at it, I'd say two-thirds to half, at least. Somewhere in there.
Two-thirds of mom and pop?
Yeah, for the most part. But, you, well, you know, you might have...
You won't be held to it?
No, I'm just thinking, because sometimes you, you might have one guy who builds, you know, a builder who will build one home at a time, but he's, perhaps he's working with the homeowner, doing, um, you know, some of our new flex zoning where they're, you know, they're building a home perhaps for a older, older couple who live there, demolishing the house, and, you know, one of those combo deals. So what do you call that?
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And my question was about climate change, so I think you, uh, you talked about that earlier. So, all right, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman.
Appreciate it.
The next applicant is traveling on business and can't be here tonight. His name is Michael Spadia, and he sent in an application. Um, he's lived in Easton for twenty-seven years. He has, uh, a huge love of the land around us, uses the trails and parks extensively, and has a lot of outdoor industry experience that led him to this committee, and the exciting opportunity to make our land better and protected. So, um, the, and I, these are, I'm just reading these in order of how they're in the packet. So I thought they were alphabetical at first, but they're not. So, um, next up is Ed Hands. Ed, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself, and you know the drill by now.
Hi, I'm Ed Hands, uh, from Twenty Persia Street. Um, I've been involved in town government for a number of years. Uh, was on the Historical Commission for quite a while, and, um, been interested to hear, uh, the Conservation Commission's, um, goal of rewriting, um, uh, bylaws to make them work better, uh, for individuals coming in. That's something that we did on the Historical Commission, related to demolition delay, and, um, that's always a worthwhile goal. But I also am sitting here hearing, sort of, we're going to be nibbling away at our environment. Nibble, 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 nibble. That, to me, isn't smart growth. Um, and, um, I'm all in favor of helping out the individual homeowner. I'm not sure that, um, developers are, um, worthy of changing our bylaws. Someone has to speak for the environment, otherwise it will be gone. And I haven't heard anybody speak for that yet. We've talked about balancing and making it easier for the applicants, but, um, what about preserving habitat? Uh, saving corridors for wildlife? Um, mitigating the effects of climate change? All of these are things that the Conservation Commission should be doing, rather than nibbling away at a lot here and a swimming pool here and things like that. Um, if we look back at the, um, Envision Easton Master Plan, one of the interesting things about that and our Open Space and Recreation Plan is that the writers of those documents, and I was one of them, steered away from the issue of climate change because it was so politically controversial at the time. Well, it's not controversial anymore. Most people seem now to recognize that climate change has come in. And I agree with, I think it was Mr. Farron who said, I'm not sure we're going to be able to, uh, do much about it. But I think here in Easton, we can do a lot about it, to mitigate the effects and maybe even turn back the clock a little bit. I was, um, an attendee at the Climate Mitigation Panel that we had a, a while back, and, um, we certainly have a lot of expertise here at the local level that would give us, uh, a lot of assistance in coming up with a climate mitigation plan. Getting back to me for a minute, I guess, um, you might ask yourself, well, someone who's generally called the town historian, I hate to say that when Hazel's in the room, but, um, why would I be interested in the environment? Uh, and the answer is that, um, the past doesn't have a future unless we do something about the environment. And, um, many years ago, I was the president and, um, temporary director of the Natural Resources Trust, and I got really interested in the environment at that time. When the opportunity came to write the climate, uh, the Conservation Section of the Envision Easton Plan, I volunteered to do that, and I learned a lot, um, doing that. And then, um, more recently, the scientific part of the Open Space and Recreation Plan was something that I wrote, and it took many, many hours and a lot of research. So I think I can learn the, the legalese of wetland protection. I was reading about vernal pools today in the, in the town bylaws. They don't seem that difficult, and two-hundred feet actually doesn't help the salamanders that much, because many of them come from even further away. But, um, um, what I would really like to do is look at the issue of managing our natural resources. The state, uh, Chapter Forty says that not only are we responsible for wetlands on a Conservation Commission, but we're, uh, responsible for managing and promoting the other natural resources in town, researching those, and also, um, getting organizations and individuals in town to work together to achieve the goals of promoting natural resources. And I think that, um, for a long time, the Conservation Commission has been a part of the planning process, but hasn't really looked at, uh, its wider, um, uh, goals. Questions?
I'm going to ask the same question as I asked the other candidates, too, and that is, um, in terms of balancing the need for economic development in town, uh, at the same time protecting the environment, wetlands, water supply, habitat, how do you, how do you do that?
Well, I think, as my two predecessors have stated, it's a complicated thing. And we want to be, we want to be fair to our citizens, but we also want to be fair to the citizens of the future. And I, I think you can do that by maintaining strict regulations, um, under our current bylaws. Uh, and I think we also should be making a distinction between business development, uh, which the master plan, uh, is promotes, and residential development, which ultimately, uh, leaves us losing tax money. Uh, I read a recent study that basically said that, um, residential growth is wonderful for the state of Massachusetts. We have a lot of, a lot of housing needs, which are absolutely true. Reading the fine print, however, we found, I, I found that, uh, for every house built in a, in a suburban community, or for every family brought in to live in, um, an apartment, uh, essentially, you pay out one-point-one times the amount of tax revenue that they bring in. In other words, uh, if you remember the old dog track, we're sort of like the greyhound chasing Swifty when we promote residential development. The master plan really pushed forward with the idea of, uh, improving commercial and, uh, business growth. We've had zoning changes in areas along Route one thirty-eight that would promote business development, and, um, the areas there are among the, um, higher land in town. So the, uh, wetland impact for those developments would be much less than, uh, an individual house thrown in here or thrown in there.
Thank you. My next question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, you talked about the, the bylaws and regulations. Do you have any, uh, need to see them modified, changed, as they, as they pertain to the Conservation Commission?
Well, um, I, I think I'll disagree with, uh, Mr. Goodman, who, uh, I want to say, by the way, has been a really good, uh, member of the CPA Committee for the last three years. I've enjoyed serving with him. Uh, but I want to disagree with him a little bit in, in the, the idea of, um, duplicate regulations, where there's a state and a, and a local thing that says the same thing twice. Um, and I think that's important. It's an important safeguard in case, uh, the state decides to change its mind. That would give us an opportunity, uh, to either go along with that or continue, uh, with what we want to say. So I, I don't see a problem with doubling it. I do see a problem with language that's hard for people to understand, and that would be something that I'd like to see clarified as well.
Okay, thank you.
All set?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Hands, I, this may be a rhetorical question, I don't know, but in a situation where if you were appointed to the Conservation Commission, and there were two people on the left of you and two people on the right of you, each of those two are sides that represent more of a balance toward the environment, or more of a balance toward development, what would you bring to the board to bring some compromise to that? In other words, for all those houses that, uh, that, uh, Mr. Barger was referencing, that we know that, that they are appealing to us, how would you, how would you give the ones that deserve it a nibble or two?
Well, that's an interesting question, because it's, it's a situation that I've faced on the Historical Commission many a time. You know, I'm, uh, obviously much in favor of, of saving old houses, but in all the time that I was on the commission, and that's close to forty years, I never prevented a homeowner from doing what they wanted to do with their property after we went through a process of negotiation, to see how we could reach a win-win situation for both sides. So while philosophically, I, I might sound harsh on development, practically, I try to deal with everything on a case-by-case basis, and, um, I, I think that's probably the best way to balance things, case by case.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hands, as part of your application, you mentioned your work at the NRT, and specifically its impact on your ability to understand the impacts on biodiversity. Could you shed a little bit of light with your work on the NRT and how that factors into that?
Well, I worked at, worked at the NRT in the past tense. Uh, I've been away from there for a number of years now. But what that did was, um, make me privy to a whole bunch of studies that they had paid for, related to the different ecosystems, uh, and environments that were located on those properties. Then I discovered that the town, the Conservation Commission, had paid for similar studies at Wheaton Farm, at the Kippi Grant Reservation up by the high school, uh, and, um, just as the NRT has had a difficult time following some of the recommendations, the town doesn't seem to follow any of the recommendations. And, and that's something I think that is long overdue. When it came time to write the Open Space and Recreation Plan, I volunteered to, uh, take the information that the state, Natural Heritage, provides, and try to translate that into layman's language. The state uses, uh, a, a number of different descriptors for environments, and, and turn it into something that everybody could understand. We have a rich and complex, um, ecosystem here in Easton, uh, with over a hundred species of birds, uh, reptiles, amphibians, um, and an increasing number, based on the amount of roadkill I've been seeing lately, uh, an increasing number of mammals. Um, one of the things that I think would be fun to do for the Conservation Commission is talk to homeowners about, uh, how they, as individual homeowners, voluntarily can help promote, um, biodiversity in, in the town. Uh, and, um, that's something I'd like to work on.
Yes, thank you.
That actually answers my question, my initial question, but, uh, do you have any, are there any other boards that you are currently on in town that would conflict with this demanding schedule?
I'm, uh, well, first of all, I'm retired, so that gives me time, uh, to attend some of this coursework and stuff. I should say semi-retired. I do a little for Stonell still. But I am on the CPA Committee, and I am also an associate member of the Agricultural Commission. I was a founder of the AgCom, and when I retired last year, they asked me to stay on, uh, mainly so that they would have some kind of an official representative up at the community garden, where I have a garden.
Ed, I think you answered my questions about climate change, so, um, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming in tonight.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hands.
Thank you, Mr. Hands.
And next up, we have, um, I just lost my place. Carol Lundin. Carol, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. I may be the only one here who respects ticks so much that I have my pants tucked into my socks.
I hope we don't have ticks in the Select Board Office.
Anyone else?
No.
So my name is Carol Lundin. Uh, I live on Western Ave, and in my backyard, there's a stone wall, and on the other side of that stone wall is nothing but conservation land. It's something that I value and I respect, and, um, I want to invest in, not only for my own life and lifestyle, but for the town at large, and for the value of, of life in the town at large. Um, I'm pretty knowledgeable about horticulture. I'm certified in, as you know from my application, uh, Advanced Certificate in Native Plant Horticulture and Design. I have a certification in, uh, Organic Land Care. And, uh, while I'm not familiar with the bylaws and the state regulations, I will tell you that, uh, if, if you accept my application, which I appreciate your reviewing, that I will study them as hard as I studied when I was studying for my Rhode Island Certified Horticulturist credential, which was to study in winter about a hundred and ninety-five winter twigs, and learning to identify. You go in the woods in winter, and you look at a stick, and you think, what is that? But for me, I learned that that twig versus that twig, that's the difference between a dalmatian and a beagle. It becomes easy with practice. So I appreciate the, the diversity that we have, and I know that a wetland is not a thing. A wetland is a, a system of living organisms that all support one another, and without diversity in our land, in our wetlands, the wetlands will fail. So I'm here to help protect those, not just wetlands, but all the, the natural areas in town. I'm very familiar with exotic invasive plants. I'm a, I will pull over on the side of the road if I'm driving around and get out my trash bag and chuck garlic mustard into it. You know, it really matters to me, but I can make a bigger impact by having a bigger, um, by doing something like serving on a, a committee like this. I want to have a bigger impact.
Craig?
I'm going to ask the same question I've asked everybody.
Sure.
How would you balance, if you were to be a member of the Conservation Commission, how would you balance our need for economic development at the same time as protecting the wetlands, our water supply, our, our environment?
Sure. Um, I think, I agree with Mr. Hands in that, um, we're largely working for the future when it comes to our resources, and if we don't protect those resources, um, the future is bleaker and bleaker. Um, I would like to see smart growth where we're disturbing less area of land with machines and buildings and infrastructure, and, and build more vertically, at a place like the Quissette Properties. Um, I think that was a pretty efficient use of land there. You know, I care about every salamander, but if the town's going to grow, then that's a smart way to do it.
I won't ask you about the regulations and the bylaws, because you've already indicated that you're not familiar with them at this point, so...
Correct.
I'm all set right now.
I do have a question to follow up on Craig's, because mine was... I do have a question to follow up on Craig's, because mine was similar to that, but I just wanted to follow through on your answer, which was a very good one. But what if the applicant doesn't want to build vertically? Would you have the ability to make some kind of compromise?
Sure. I was answering Mr. Barger's question about economic growth, and I think of economic growth as more of development, you know, not just a home, but a system of homes. So, I'm very in favor of being respectful of people's wishes in their own property and finding a way to get to yes.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the balance in terms of trying to see both sides of the issue that comes before you. One of the questions that I had for you, I think you are one of the few candidates that talked about it, was that you were a talent of site assessment, not limited to invasive plant identification. But what other site assessment goes into your talent?
Sure. It has to do with drainage. Where's the water going when it rains? What's the slope? How many gallons per hour are coming down on a particular swath of land? Where's the sun? What plants would thrive here? What plants wouldn't thrive here in a wetland mitigation situation? If a wetland is disturbed, native plants are disturbed. When we rebuild the wetland on a property to try to mitigate the impact of destroying an actual naturally-evolved wetland, there's a dirty truth about native plants, which is that you go down to a nursery on Bay Road, or you go down to a nursery in a big box store, and in many cases, if you need to put 25 blueberry trees in, those blueberry trees are all clones of one another, okay? Or maybe they're two different species or cultivars of blueberries, but if they're all mostly clones, or, you know, 12 of them are one clone and 13 of them are the other clone, then that's not biodiversity. So, I would push for education, awareness of when we're replacing native plants, that we replace them with genetically diverse plantings. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you very much.
Mark?
You've answered most of my questions. Are you on any of the boards in town?
In town, yes, the Easton Garden Club.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I'm also on the board of the Sharon Garden Club. In both of those situations, I'm a Horticulture Chair or Co-Chair.
So, tell me a little bit more about your thoughts on climate change and the role of the Concom with impending or current climate change.
Sure, yeah. I believe that climate change is happening now with, when we have a rainstorm, it's more, when we have windstorms, it's windier. Townwide, it's a good question. I think a lot of towns are struggling with these kind of challenges. I think a lot of towns that are not on the coast, it's easy to, oh, we're not going to get flooded. Well, what if we are? What if we aren't supporting our wetlands to the extent that they can absorb the rain coming down? And I don't want to use the word monsoon, because that's an overstatement and kind of a season, but, I'm sorry, I'm about to have a hot flash. So, let me take a breath.
Sure. Well, I like what you've had to say so far, and I appreciate you being here for this. If you want to add anything, you can. If you want a couple of minutes or...
Sure. Would you please repeat your question?
Sure. Just interested in your thoughts on climate change and what the Concom's role could be in assisting the town with that.
Sure, okay. So, the more our land is comprised of natural systems, robust natural systems that are diverse, the more the town can mitigate the impacts of climate change.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here tonight for that. And now, the board will deliberate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lundin.
So, I'll say we have five great candidates, and it's never easy when we have all good candidates, which we usually do, to make these decisions, and also to be respectful of the time that people have served on boards. I'd say that personally, when I look at this, I look about balance. You know, I don't want the board to be too heavy pro-development or too heavy no-development. I think the important thing is that we have rules and regulations, and we need to follow those, and we need to understand them, know them. We need to take all the training that we can to do those properly and try to work together to move those forward. So, if anybody else has any comments or thoughts?
I would just like to add that I came here thinking that there were potentially sides, you know, that there were, whether it was development or whether it was the environment, and I genuinely felt instead that each of the candidates spoke to both sides, and so I appreciate that, because I really do think it's a balance. It's very important to be able to develop in Easton economically, make it sustainable for our growth and the importance it adds to revenues. But I firmly also believe the importance of preserving some of the things that are very important to Easton, the open space, the environment that we have, the wetlands that we have, the natural resources that I think so many of our residents take to heart. So, I just want to say I appreciate all of the effort that the people came in and put forth, and it's great to have so much community engagement around what I think is a very important thing to all of us, not just here tonight by the number of people that have applied, but certainly the feedback that we received in terms of letters of support for all the candidates that came through. So, thank you to everybody for being here. I really appreciate it, trying to find everybody who got up and spoke today. So, thank you.
God, I felt that all four of the participants were tremendous in presenting their case eloquently. I thanked them.
Yeah, I thought it was one of the better, most thoughtful discussions that I've been a part of, and I sincerely appreciate all of you coming and speaking and representing yourselves and the Concom. So, thank you very much for that.
So, we're going to do a roll call vote, and you'd say the Select Board member's name and then the two candidates that you're choosing. So, if you want to start, Mark?
Sure. Liam Goodman Farron.
Broussard Spieda Lundin.
Barger Spedia Lundin.
Fulgenetti Lundin Spedia.
King Hands Lundin.
You got that, Michael?
So, how does that work?
Four for Lundin, three for Spedia.
Four for Lundin.
Yeah, four for Lundin, three for Spedia, one for Hands, one for Goodman, one for Farron.
Right. Thank you very much. So, next up is the Library Board of Directors. First one is Nancy Donahue. Nancy, you want to come up? You want to tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in staying on the Library Board of Directors?
Yes, thank you. My name is Nancy Donahue. I have been a resident of Easton for 23 years now. I've also been employed by the Easton Public Schools for 15 years. I'm a science teacher at Oliver Ames High School. And two of the unique things that I have brought to my work on the Library Board, which I have thoroughly enjoyed and very hope to be able to continue to serve on the board, those two things are my connection with the schools. So, I am able to communicate with my students and my colleagues about programs that the library has, as well as bringing their interests and needs to the Library Board. So, that's been thoroughly enjoyable, being that connection. And the second is my committee work on the Library Board is with the HR Committee, and I've really enjoyed working on human resource issues with the other members of that committee, as well as with the Director, Dr. Horemath, and that's a natural connection to my prior career to teaching, which was manager in financial services with State Street Corporation. So, I really enjoy bringing that human resource experience, so.
Excellent. Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Mark.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, Hazel Varela. Come on up.
I'm Hazel Varela, and I've lived in Easton since 1945 and been involved in a number of things. Just if you'd like to learn something historical about the room, there's a bullet hole right up in that corner where a gun was fired accidentally, and Mrs. Frothingham decided that the bullet hole should stay there, symbolic that basically this was a room of peace, and there had been one accident, and that was it. So, just very quickly...
Thank you for sharing that. I'm glad it was on that side of the room.
Oh, yeah, right. Notice we are all, you know, facing this way.
I won't be able to pay attention to anything else for the rest of the night.
I think the Feng Shui has us in the proper part of the room now.
Obviously, growing up in Easton and obviously teaching in Easton for 41 years, the library was very, very important to me and to my students. The cooperation between the library and the school system has really been extraordinary over the decades, and we're really very fortunate. I'm also involved with Historical Society for decades, and I think the relationship between the Historical Society and the library have been fantastic. Very often, we have tours coming to Easton. They want to see the five Richardson Buildings, and basically, as recently as, what, last week, we had tours coming from Newport, Rhode Island, but they were architectural students from all over the country. So, I think the relationships that I've established over the decades have been very, very valuable. I became a member of the Historical, the Library Board in 1990, and I'm not going over its history. I am going to suggest that when you find a few moments someday, that you take a look at, this is the current community calendar of the town of Easton, and what we have in it is the history of the library, 135 years. For almost 80 years, it was paid for by the endowment funds. And then, in the 1980s, we had some problems, and a partnership was worked out between, obviously, the town and the library. And that partnership, 29 years, absolutely fantastic. There were complications our first 19 years. Did you ever figure out how to design a Richardson Building for the 21st century and not upset people? It took us basically 19 years to answer those questions. But I would like to say that in the most recent 10 years, I, and I think Nancy, and everybody else, is really proud of our library. First of all, we have an extraordinary campus, not only a library, but Queesit House and obviously Queesit Commons. I read an email earlier today that the parking lot was jammed recently, because not only were our graduates having their proms and everything else dresses taken in the Queesit Gardens, but Stonehill, excuse me, Stonehill was there. So, we have attracted quite a neighborhood there. Secondly, we have an extraordinary staff. They not only put in whatever given hours, but they devote so much time to special projects, knitting, class discussions. We are so fortunate. And the cream is sitting over there. We have an extraordinary director. I don't know enough positive adjectives to describe him, her, I'm sorry. We're just very fortunate. The most recent 10 years, actually, I guess, the most recent 29 years, I've been the secretary, and I never seem to get fired.
That's a hard role.
It is a pleasure to have been on the Library Board, and I hope I can continue.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lundin.
And I sent you an email last night or this weekend with the letter and the photo of the board select.
Oh, thank you.
Or the Select Board.
And we need a picture.
Yes, I sent that to you, so I'm off the hook. I did my homework.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Hazel.
You're welcome.
We have Brian, I apologize if I mispronounce your last name, Abramski?
Abramski.
Abramski, sorry about that.
Oh, may I ask, answer one more question or make a statement?
If you have to go to the microphone.
We established last year an advisory committee.
Hazel, you have to use the microphone or they'll blink that.
I just want to mention that one of our directors, Kelly Berset, has created an advisory committee of people in the community interested in helping us forward the direction of the library. And I do want to stress that it's open to anyone who really would like to become involved in maybe a particular project for the library. And obviously, we appreciate the friends of the library who raise great money for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Hazel.
Thank you.
Good evening. Brian Abramowski, 31 Penny Lane. This is my first foray into our local government. I've lived in Easton since 2014. I've attended town meetings and such, and through those meetings and becoming aware of what's going on in town, realized that all the good things our town has to offer are the result of volunteers. So, I figures at some point, the people that volunteer are the people that make a difference. So, that was the reason behind me putting in an application to something I care a lot about and that my family cares a lot about. I have two young children who are, my oldest is about to enter the Easton Public Schools, and I know there was a lot of debate and hand-wringing at the last town meeting about the state of the schools, but I wouldn't have moved to Easton if I didn't think that the town was a great place to raise a family and that the schools were a great place to send my kids. I wouldn't have even moved here if I didn't think that. So, I still think that, and I think one of the things my family has thus far enjoyed the most about town is the library. Everything that Ms. Varela said, I couldn't agree with more. I think the staff at the library is great. I think the campus is great, and if I was you, I would vote for these two ladies to continue, because I think they do a fantastic, I think the library is run in a fantastic way. The reason I put in an application is to make sure that seats don't go unfilled and that the library is not wanting for stewardship going forward. And I think that it's an important resource for our town. It's an important resource for the young and old alike. I use the library all the time. My wife uses it all the time. My kids take out 50 books at a time, so...
I hope they return them all, or you'll have a big bill on your head.
I always return them. So, I guess, I, you know, I could tell you about, I'm a lawyer in Boston. I grew up in Connecticut, went to College of Holy Cross in Worcester. I grew up in a town that had a pretty good library. I grew up doing summer reading programs, trying to win prizes and all that kind of stuff, and I think it made me a better student, a better reader. I think instilling a lifelong love of reading and commitment to being a better person starts with, you know, being a young kid and having my parents take me to the library. So, I'm very proud of our library. I think we have a great library in town. I think it works hand-in-hand with the school system, and I think that's very important. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but I just wanted to come and make sure that, you know, it's not just people have been doing it for a long time and everyone else just says, oh, I don't have to worry about it, because Ms. Varela will do it or Ms. Donahue will do it. And I think going forward in town, it's important for people like myself who are newer to town, who are not, haven't lived here my whole life, but do care about the town, care about the community, take an interest, show an interest, and, you know, be willing to put your name on the line, put your time out there, and I commend everybody in town who does that. I think it's not easy. You deal with a lot of... You deal with a lot of discord, I guess, in what is a volunteer position in a lot of cases. So I think everybody who makes the effort to do that deserves at least a little bit of respect, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Chuck has a question.
Yes, Mr. Abramski, there is a chance that you might not be chosen tonight, especially considering your strong endorsement of the incumbents.
Yeah, I understand.
We're excited to see you here, we really are. And would you be available should some other openings come up, like during the year even? That often happens.
Yes, I mean, like anybody who is a professional with a young family, like my time is at a premium, but I think I'm here tonight because I think it's important. You know, I make time for things I think are important. My family, my job, obviously have ample time requirements, but I think it's important, like I said, to show up and be heard if you want things to be better. I don't think sitting at home and complaining about things on the internet is a way to get anything done, so.
I second that.
There are vacancies on other boards. I encourage you. Seem like you have what it takes.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you reviewing my application and I, again, say thank you to the current Library Board Administration, everybody. I think they do a great job, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we have one more. Amy Kirkaldi.
Madam Chair, Amy Kirkaldi emailed today with regret that due to some other circumstances, she was withdrawing from consideration.
Okay, great. Well, again, we have more applicants than the positions to fill and we really love to see new faces here. It's really important and I agree with everything that you said, Mr. Abramski. Personally, the library's gone through a lot in the past many years. There's been physical changes. You know, before you were in town, that was an overgrown jungle behind the library and somebody came up with the idea of let's explore that further. The Library Board has taken a lot of risks over the years, whether to add on or whether to restore, whether to purchase the Queeset House next door, how to handle that. And there's always been a vision to move that forward. The library is really a hub in our community and even an example of that, one of the biggest challenges that we have is there's so much going on in the town all the time, it's really hard to keep track of it. And the library really can act as the hub with that just through the calendar that Mrs. Varela has. It's fascinating, all of the events that we keep track of that way. So we'll do our roll call vote and then I'll have a couple of comments also.
Lamb, Donahue, Varela.
Broussard, Donahue, Varela.
Barger, Donahue, Varela.
Fulgenetti, Donahue, Varela.
King, Donahue, Varela.
And so what I'd like to just say is that I think you make a really good point about people sitting back and thinking somebody else will do it and not throwing their name out there and, you know, oh, it's always going to be them. We do need to know who makes an interest and that's why they created an advisory board last year. So I'd really recommend that you connect with this group. I think the advisory board has a very important role and I think you'll find that maybe many of the things that you're interested in will be able to fulfill through that advisory council and really hope that you consider that. And there's also, for people watching at home, there's the Friends of the Library and they do a lot of fundraising and social outreach and things like that. So please keep in touch that we have a lot of openings at different times during the year and would love you to consider joining other things besides your interest in the library, so. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you.
All right, and next up for the Municipal Building Committee.
Madam Chair, so today we received an email from Todd Texera that he would be withdrawing from consideration.
Okay.
So while this was originally a contested appointment, it is now uncontested. I still recommend you vote here as this is where the agenda is posted. And I would recommend multiple votes in that there are multiple terms. There are two, three-year terms available and one year which is to fill a vacancy. So it would be the board's discretion how to fill that. There are two incumbents who are reapplying and then a new applicant, Mr. Benson.
Okay. I would probably recommend that the incumbents keep the three-year and Mr. Benson tries out the one-year to make sure that...
Yep, I would second that.
He likes that, so.
Sorry, just, I would, just going to do that as three individual motions and roll calls.
Understood.
Okay. So we'll make a motion for Larry Moat to be on the Municipal Building Committee.
For three-year term?
For the three-year term.
Second.
And that's roll call.
Lamb, Moat.
Broussard, Moat.
Barger, Moat.
Fulgenetti, Moat.
King, Moat.
Okay. And for Andrew Williams, also for the three-year, if somebody'd like to make a motion, a second and a roll call?
So moved.
Second.
That's Craig, Tom.
Lamb, Williams.
Broussard, Williams.
Barger, Williams.
Fulgenetti, Williams.
King, Williams.
Okay. And the third one for Albert Benson for the one-year term, a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second?
Craig and Tom.
Lamb, Benson.
Broussard, Benson.
Barger, Benson.
Fulgenetti, Benson.
King, Benson.
Okay.
We didn't have to put the expiration date when we did that, did we?
The motion said for the one-year term.
Yeah.
Right. I meant for any of them.
Okay. Let me just find my place on the agenda.
Madam Chair, sorry to keep interrupting. If I make another suggestion, the uncontested seats, an email was sent to the applicants that they were not required to attend. However, especially the new applicants were offered invitation if they want to introduce themselves. I do know we have a couple of people here tonight. If the chair would consider maybe taking that out of order, just because they are here and waiting.
Absolutely.
Just a recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Rivera, if you'd like to come up and talk about the Commission on Disability. Introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about that.
Well, my name is Adam Rivera. I live at 6221 Robert Drive here in Easton and our family moved here back in 2013. I'm the pastor of Liberty Baptist Church here in town and had the opportunity over the last several years to get to know many of you and appreciate what you do for the town. And we've just loved living in Easton. Growing up in Tampa, Florida, you don't get much of a community feeling. Living up in a big neighborhood like I did and moving here, we wondered if coming to New England, coming to a smaller town, the experience is so different from Tampa, if we would be accepted. And we found it to be quite the opposite, both personally and with the church. And we've just been so very grateful for that, that we've wanted to find ways to give back. And for some time, I've looked at some ways through committees to try to find something that, particularly with what I do as a pastor, something that would be more nonpartisan. I don't know that such a board exists, but maybe the closest that you could find would be the Commission of Disabilities. And so in looking at the vacancies where there was no incumbents, it seemed like that that would be something that I would desire to volunteer for. My son, back in 2014, was diagnosed with autism right before he was three years old. And I'd like to say and think that before that happened, I had some knowledge and some compassion for those with disabilities and special needs. But I've been schooled over the last five years by my son and just by others that we have interacted with. And I hope that and desire to take some of the lessons that he has taught me. He's now eight. He's through the, being schooled through the Easton School District, being sent to a school in Walpole. And we've received so much from this town in so many ways and I hope to take some of what my son has taught me and to help other families in this town who have needs as well with the commission. So one of my talents as a pastor is not being brief. And so it's an occupational hazard. So I'd like to try to be brief tonight and just say I thank you for considering me and would hope to serve with honor.
Well, thank you. Really appreciate that. And I appreciate you sharing your story of why this committee interests you. We do love to see new faces. I mean, you're not such a new face in town. We know who you are, but it's nice to see that you want to be a part of a committee like that. And I think you'll bring a lot of added value and a lot of personal experience, so thank you very much. It sounds like you've made Easton your home and you're going to be here for a little while.
That's our plane.
Pastor, I commend your willingness to serve and as well as the fact that you've served the community already, but your willingness to serve in this position is admirable. Thank you.
I also appreciate you were briefed tonight. That was...
Don't tell my church. Don't let the word get out. I have a reputation to keep up.
But still impactful, I would say. Thank you so much also for sharing the story.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
And that was...
There was someone else, but I think they stepped away.
Okay. All right, so where are we? The contract award with J.C. Madigan.
Can we do this? Are we going to...
Make a motion then a vote.
Oh, do we? Oh, I thought that was later on the agenda.
Well, the suggestion was just to maybe take that item out of order.
Oh, to vote the whole thing. All right.
Since you're here now, sure.
I thought you just meant the, that one interview.
Just to note, today the town clerk brought to our attention that the capital planning committee while is up for reappointment, that position is actually appointed by the town moderator. So my suggestion would be to make a motion to approve the slate excluding the capital planning committee. And we will forward the applicant, application to the town moderator for her consideration.
Just one note, I noticed that on some of these terms, they're different. So is it important for us to delineate which one for which term?
So the suggestion here is a slate is they would be slotted as they are listed.
As ordered.
So this is a one-for-one match.
Okay.
So that unless the board wishes to amend that, that would be the suggestion. Vote as a slate as presented, again, with the exclusion of the capital planning committee.
Excellent. So could I get a motion, a second and a roll call?
Second.
Lamb, slate.
Broussard, slate.
Barger, slate.
Fulgenetti, slate.
King, slate.
Okay. Did you catch the first and the second on that, Lisa?
No.
That was Craig and Tom. I was getting good at calling those out and missed that one. All right. Now the contract award for J.C. Madigan.
So attached in your packet is a memo submitted by DPW Director Dave Field for DPW Motor Equipment. This is equipment that was approved in the capital request at town meeting. $220,000 was the total capital request to purchase a new large hook lift dump truck. The contract that is contained in the packet along with your memo is for the uplifting of a Peterbilt cabin chassis with a swamp loader and a variety of other materials. This will be the uplifting, upfitting work on it will be purchased under statewide procurement contract with the Greater Boston Police Council. Total contract amount is just over $126,000. It'll be funded through approved capital funds as well as DPW revolving account funds. I recommend that the board vote to award this contract.
Any questions?
None.
So we'll take a motion to award the contract to J.C. Madigan for the Department of Public Works Motor Equipment.
So moved. Second.
Chuck and Craig, all in favor? Unanimous. Next up is the contract award for the Peterbilt Store of New England, Department of Public Works Motor Equipment.
Sure. So this is an associated contract. This is the same, under the same capital request that was approved at town meeting for $220,000. This is for the purchase of a 2019 Peterbilt 348 cabin chassis being purchased under the same statewide procurement contract. The total is just over $103,000. Again, funded through the same two funding sources, which is approved capital funds, or I'm sorry, only approved capital funds, not a mixture of sources. So this is from the capital funding. I recommend approval.
Any questions? Okay. Take a motion to award the contract to the Peterbilt Store of New England for the Department of Public Works Motor Equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Craig and Chuck, all in favor? Next up, the vote to approve issuance and details of a $1 million, $50,000 bond anticipation note and signed related closing papers.
So Treasurer Collector Linda Hawkes will speak to that.
How are we doing?
Good, how are you?
Good evening.
Good.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Sorry.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. So I sent a memo previously summarizing what the borrowing would be for. This is, we typically do a borrowing at about this time of year to cover some of our capital expenditures during the year. And they're itemized in that memo. I can read them for you if you want. This is a portion of water well number four replacement. The wastewater treatment agreement for Five Corners. The DPW Highway Hook Lift Tractor and Flail, part of the sewer construction. I believe that that is the part that is not going to be covered by the Clean Water Trust loan that we approved a couple of weeks ago. DPW Utility Vehicle Replacement, Fire Department Vehicle Replacement, Foundry Street Water Main Replacement, all passed as part of a capital budget previously.
That, the Foundry Street, that's the 106? That's the Five Corners?
Correct. That's a portion. This is, I believe, bond anticipation note for a portion of the financing for the water project, which is a discrete project but is being constructed concurrently with the Five Corners sewer project to reduce the amount of times that we're opening that road.
Can you just describe a little bit about what a bond anticipation note is versus long-term borrowing for the people at home that might not know what that means?
Sure. The bond anticipation note, because, let me just step back, because you have to spend your bond money, your permanent financing within short periods of time, generally three or so years, in order to not borrow money too far ahead of time, you are allowed to get what's called a bond anticipation note from the state, basically. The state backs the money. And it's short-term money. It can be renewed. So it's all part of a greater scheme of borrowing just segments of money and then either renewing them. And then finally, when you get close to coming to the completion of a project, you permanently finance it and then you know that you're going to stay within your three or so year window of time, that you're allowed to spend the permanent financing.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any questions on the board? So we'll take a motion to approve issuance and details of the $1 million, $50,000 bond anticipation note.
I'm, excuse me, I apologize. This is a specific motion. So this is similar, we had the language from the Clean Water Trust. So years ago, the clerk of the board would have to read this kind of six paragraph-long vote into the record. Bond counsel has since opined that a motion to adopt the vote of a select board as it is written and will then be incorporated into the minutes is sufficient. So there's a suggested motion that references the vote, which is printed for everyone on the board tonight.
You have that, Craig, on page one?
Yeah, I move to adopt the vote of the select board as written for the bond anticipation note dated June 26, 2019 and incorporate the text of such vote into the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
That's Craig and Chuck, all in favor? Unanimous. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
The annual reappointment of Constable Harold March.
Sure. So on the same fiscal year timetable that your board and committee appointments occur, the board, select board also makes appointments of constables to serve in the town of Easton. There is one such constable whose term is set to expire at the end of this month, who has sought an additional three years of appointment. The police chief and the treasurer collector have reviewed the application. They have no concerns with a reappointment by the board. So if you're willing, I would recommend that you consider a vote, be a roll call to reappoint Mr. March as a constable for the town of Easton with a term set to expire June 30 of 2022, with the one condition that he provide the clerk's office with an updated bond.
Can I get a motion?
So moved. I move to reappoint Constable Harold March with the condition that he provide the town clerk's office with said updated bond.
Second.
And June 30, 2022.
With the term set to expire June 30, 2022. Thank you.
So that's Tom and Craig and it's a roll call vote.
Lamb, March.
Broussard, March.
Barger, March.
Fulgenetti, March.
King, March.
Excellent. And discussion impossible votes for annual select board representatives. So right now, the select board members are appointed to different committees, Affordable Housing Trust, Audit Committee, Budget Subcommittee, 524 Depot Street Master Plan Development Team, Economic Development Council, Green Communities, and the Human Rights Committee. So I would like to start by asking, is anybody willing to or wanting to give up any... So, I would like to start by asking, is anybody willing to, or wanting to give up any committee that they're on already?
I will be, I had a conversation with Mr. Lamb, and I'll be happy to allow him to serve on the Economic Development Council, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you know the Economic Development Council meets the second Thursday of the month at 1:00 here?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. I think with your business background, that will be really helpful to the, to the committee. Does anybody else want to fight him for it?
No.
Nope. All right, so, and I'm on the Economic Development Committee also, and I'd be happy to continue to serve, so if we wanted to start off by making a motion to appoint Mark and me to the Economic Development Committee.
So moved.
Is second, is that by a roll call?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Tom made the motion, and Craig seconded, and roll call.
Lamb, Lamb, Fulgenetti.
Broussard, Lamb, Fulgenetti.
That was a tough one. Barger, Fulgenetti, and Lamb.
Oh, gosh. Fulgenetti, Lamb, Fulgenetti, Fulgenetti.
King, Lamb, Fulgenetti.
All right, great. So that takes economic development off the table. What about affordable housing? Chuck, you are serving on that now, are you still interested in being on that committee?
I am.
Excellent. Everybody happy with Chuck being on the affordable housing?
Absolutely, I am.
All right. A first, a second, and a roll call.
I make a motion to appoint Mr. King as the Select Board Representative for the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
Tom, Craig?
Lamb, King.
Broussard, King.
Barger, King.
Fulgenetti, King.
King, King.
Excellent. Next up is the Audit Committee. Do you serve on that now, Chuck?
I do.
Mr. King, are you still a CPA?
Yes.
Just confirming.
Do you want to continue to serve on that?
Sure.
Okay. And everyone happy to have Mr. King serve on the Audit Committee?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, a motion and a second and a roll call.
I make a motion to appoint Mr. King as a Select Board Representative for the Audit Committee.
Second that.
So that was Tom and Craig, and the roll call vote.
Lamb, King.
Broussard, King.
Barger, King.
Fulgenetti, King.
King, King.
Okay. Budget Subcommittee, right now, that is Tom and Craig.
I still have a lot of interest in serving.
I second that.
Second, Tom, or you second, you also have interest?
I also ought to be on...
Lot of redundancy going on here.
I think we're starting to lose a little bit of steam here.
We're doing good, we can do this.
Did you say you're staying, Craig?
Yes, yep, yes.
So that, that's a very important role, and I think you guys have done a great job on the Budget Subcommittee, so happy to make a motion to reappoint Tom and Craig to the Budget Subcommittee.
Second.
So that was me making the motion, and Mark seconding it, and a roll call vote.
Lamb, Broussard, Barger.
Broussard, Barger, Broussard.
Barger, Broussard, Barger.
Fulgenetti, Broussard, Barger.
King, Barger, Broussard.
Okay. And the 524 Depot Street Master Plan Development Team, I'm not sure who was on, are you on that now? Tom?
That's me. I am happy to continue to serve on that, unless somebody wants to fight and arm wrestle.
Nope.
Thank you. I'll nominate Tom, continue that, on the Master Plan Development, 524 Depot Street.
I will second that.
So that's Mark and Craig, roll call vote.
Lamb, Broussard.
Broussard, Broussard.
Barger, Broussard.
Fulgenetti, Broussard.
King, Broussard.
Okay. Green Communities Committee, Craig has been on that for a while now, and doing a great job moving some important initiatives forward, and we're gonna have the Green Communities come before us pretty soon, and give us an update on some of the great things that they're working on, so I would imagine that you'd want to stay on that.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm enjoying it. Good group of people.
So can I get a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion to nominate Mr. Barger for Green Communities Committee.
I'll second that.
So that's Mark, Lamb, and Tom, roll call vote.
Lamb, Barger.
Broussard, Barger.
Barger, Barger.
Fulgenetti, Barger.
King, Barger.
Okay. And last but not least, the Human Rights Committee. Craig, you currently serve on that?
Absolutely. I would be delighted to continue to serve on that committee.
Okay. And a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Barger as a Select Board Representative for the Human Rights Committee.
Second.
So that's Tom and Mark, roll call.
Lamb, Barger.
Broussard, Barger.
Barger, Barger.
Fulgenetti, Barger.
King, Barger.
So I just want to mention that, you know, it is important to have Select Board members to be on these committees. We, a lot of times, know the rules that can guide these processes forward, and I am always interested to see that so many of us, even if we're not serving on one of these appointed committees, will show up at the committees to see what's going on and show our support. So I've noticed that over the last couple of years, and I think, I'd like to continue doing that, I think it's great, so, we're welcome to come, even if we're not a voting member, to come in and participate, and show our support for all of these boards and committees. So the next thing we have up is general minutes dated June 3.
Okay, I have one correction. I think it may actually be on page four, but it says that the amount authorized was $13,500, and I believe it was $13,500,000. Where is that?
Yep.
E. Excuse me. One, two, E.
Oh, I see.
Yep, we're just missing the three more zeros.
Got it.
All right, thank you.
Great catch.
Would somebody like to make a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Unanimous.
It was.
Yep, Craig and Tom, sorry about that. Public participation, press participation, town administrator notes?
Sure, I would just like to make a little plug, folks are probably tired of hearing about sewers, but I think it's important that anyone who lives in the Foundry Street area, commutes through that area, patronizes businesses in that area, that they check out the town's dedicated webpage for construction updates on that, it's 5cornersewer.com, five being spelt out. The website is updated every week at a minimum, and one of the most important things, I think, there is, there's traffic detour information, there's contact information for sewer service forms for people who live in that area, there's also a constant contact mailing list, so that you can get a weekly construction schedule emailed to you, usually every Friday before the coming work week, every week throughout the life of a project, so you can plan your commute accordingly. So again, that's 5cornersewer.com, I think it's a great tool for people to stay informed. On that note, this week, CNOT Corp. is continuing to install the temporary traffic lights, which are currently scheduled to begin being activated, a week of July 1, with a full detour anticipated to go into effect July 8, as with any construction, it's weather contingent, things like that, but the best way to stay on top of that is to go to 5cornersewer.com, and sign up for that mailing list, and there's all sorts of other great information there. And just one more note, that with perhaps some exceptions, we have not heard of any of the businesses in that area do plan to be open during construction, so don't let a detour stop you from patronizing one of those restaurants.
Well said.
Very well said, yeah, I think that's important. Just a question on the detour down Highland, there was, you know, obviously there's concern on people's part about the speed, et cetera, in that street, and there's, I think the chief said it was gonna be some provisions to ensure that the folks respect the speed limit on that street in some fashion.
That's correct, there will be police details on part of this project, and the police department will make sure to assign, we can't promise, as the chief said at a public meeting, we, given just the size of our staff, we can't promise the application of a person on that street at all hours every day, but we'll be making sure that folks are in that area as well, so.
Excellent, excellent.
Selectmen note?
Selectmen notes.
Donnie, you and I both attended the 100th anniversary of the American Legion, it was Saturday, I believe.
Yes.
And it was quite an event, and I just ask people to remember your veterans, remember the fallen soldiers, keeping the memory of the MIA and prisoners of war, and in terms of current issues with veterans, they do visits, they, to the disabled and elderly over at the VA Hospital, and the VFW does the same types of things. It was a nice event, a good crowd, and I enjoyed it.
It was, it was a very nice event, and we had a lot of familiar faces there, and the food was good.
Yeah.
And it was nice to honor our veterans that way. There is also a discretionary fund that they mentioned, that if people did want to contribute to, the veterans, in expenses that might be emergency-related to help them, you can do that, there's information on the town's website, and our Veteran Services Officer Corey was there, and people were singing his praises, they're very happy with him, so we were very happy to be a part of that, so thanks for thinking about that, Chuck.
Absolutely.
Thanks for going, you too, appreciate it.
Absolutely. I just want to call out, I, once again, to express appreciation for the amount of people that signed up today to participate and support our town through boards and committees. I thought it was at 50, it's at 47, but I think it's impressive that 47 people have signed up to commit, dedicate part of their time and their lives to helping our community, and I think Mr. Abramowski said it best, that people volunteering like that really make the difference, and I think that exemplifies it in our community, so just express appreciation about that.
Yep, here, I'll second that.
Mark?
A week and a half ago, Donnie and I went to the Selectmen's Training Conference, which is for new selectmen, it's for selectmen on multiple terms in, found it very informative, speaking to other people, talking about what they're going through in their towns, and if you try and help each other out, some towns know more than we knew, we know, and we know more than other towns know, and I found ourselves to be really actually a leader in that group. It was an impressive event, and I was thankful to be there.
That's awesome.
It was great, and I was really happy that you went, also, you were meeting all